Proceeding with the presentation of testimony on condolent and ceremonial resolutions. We currently have two individuals signed up to testify on ceremonial and condolent resolutions. The first individual signed up to testify is Tom Crowley, to be followed by Jan Lindo.
Mr. Crowley?
Aloha Chair, and thank you for giving me the opportunity at this moment to express my sincerest gratitude to Gladys Baisa for the nearly 50 years that she has spent serving the people of Maui in various different capacities. I personally have been blessed to have had the opportunity to work closely with Gladys during the promulgation of the Bed and Breakfast Ordinance. Gladys displayed such leadership and grace in taking on this issue that prior to her involvement seemed impossible for others to address. But with the hard work of many, the council created a law that tremendously has benefited Maui residents by allowing them to welcome visitors into their home and show aloha. This opportunity has helped many Maui residents afford their own housing and allowed them to work from home. I hope that those folks can get back into their business soon. I also was blessed to have participated with Gladys in the Maui Island Plan, and in doing so learned just how broad our island's challenges are. And again, under Gladys' grace and leadership, the community came together and addressed the concerns of all of Maui's people. But I am most grateful to have come to know Gladys personally. Gladys is perhaps the most caring person I've ever met in my life. Gladys lives her life to create opportunities for others and asks nothing in return. She embodies exactly what is meant by a dedicated public servant. She has always found the drive and compassion to do everything in her power to help others. While not everyone in Maui will have had the opportunity that I did to work and to meet and work with Gladys Baisa, there is not a single person on this island who hasn't benefited from the work that Gladys has done. Gladys has set a standard in every task that she has ever taken on that is hard to match. I hope there is a young person out there somewhere who will aspire to the standard that Gladys has set. But so far, I haven't seen anyone who shows the drive, the compassion, the wisdom that Gladys has demonstrated in her many years of service. Mahalo Gladys for all that you have done for the people of Maui, and enjoy your retirement. I'd like to offer the current council this bit of advice. When you're faced with the many difficult decisions that you are, ask yourself, "What would Gladys do?" And if you don't know, call her up. I'm sure she'd be happy to tell you. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Tom. Mr. Clerk?
Madam Chair, the next person signed up to testify on ceremonial and condolent resolutions is Jan Lindo, to be followed by Michael Williams.
Aloha and good morning. I'm honored to testify on both ceremonial resolutions. First, thank you to Auntie Gladys for the years of service that she has given to our community. I just wanted to highlight that she is one of the council members that has always been available to the people of Molokai. I know that even through the years when the mayor would have his budget session, she would make it a special priority to be there, whether she was working in his office or as a council member. I was so touched by the little bits of advice that she would give that was very stern and sturdy. Girl, nobody's gonna pick you up. You get up off that floor and you do the best that you can. And she would often say that, "This is a man's world, but women tell him what to do." And I am so... There's so much of me that has been improved and just... I credit so much of that to her and people like her, strong women who... The Bible says that women, as women and wives, we should be submissive to our husbands. And Auntie Gladys has really epitomized the idea that submissiveness in that sense and being true to our true nature of that love as a woman doesn't have to be forceful and ugly. And we don't have to battle men to have the top seat. But submissiveness in that sense means that we know exactly what to say and when to say it. We know how to be strong in beauty and in love. And I just want to thank Auntie for all the years of service and the personal inflection she's made on my life. So thank you Auntie, and I know that the next years of your life are going to be the best years of your life. So thank you so much. And then I wanted to testify in the condolence resolution to Scotty Schaefer. Oh man, I'm gonna date myself, but about 20-plus years ago, Scotty Schaefer came to me as a young person in this community and said, "I think you would be great in a group that we have together." And we've been operating as like this covert, secret group, five of us on the island, and handling this whole entire island of Molokai during disaster times. And here's what we do. We do the stuff that nobody ever knows we do. We network with all of these really important places. And when there's a tsunami, or hurricane, or any natural disaster, we're the guys who make sure that everything happens. And he said, "I want you to join, but just know that nobody ever knows we exist. We stay under the political radar. We'll never get a thank you. We'll always have to do the hard stuff. And if the beep hits the fan, it'll be us who gets hammered. But when the celebrations come, it'll never be us that gets notarized." And I don't know why I said yes, but I did. And that was the start of our Molokai Emergency Operation Committee. It started with five of us. And basically, his intention was to bring all of the emergency services, responders, and all of the legs of government and the private sector into one group where they could collaborate and really take a good look at resources and things that would help this community to thrive and to recover from disasters. Twenty-plus years later, our group consists of every single department head in the state, federal, and county level, every private sector. And we've been noted as one of the few communities that actually has a resource data bank of every single heavy equipment operator and professional on our island to access in times of need. And that was Scotty's mission, and that was his vision, and I was very happy to be a part of that. He also was very good at demanding that we work together and that we not do unnecessary things to try to outdo each other, but rather to enhance one another. And that's the way that he lived his life. And so I thank Auntie Lynette and their family for allowing such a beautiful man to be a part of our lives and to just do so much that... I cannot even begin to tell you the amount of things he's done for this county and this community, but most of us are benefiting from it, probably all of us. I give the person the credit for those things. But I am so happy that in my lifetime, I was able to know him and to love him and to see how wonderful this world can be when it comes to the heart of someone like Scotty Schaefer. Mahalo.
Thank you, Dantel. Mr. Clerk, do we have anybody else?
Yes Madam Chair. The next person signed up to testify is Michael Williams, to be followed by Lucien Denne.
Mike, are you there?
Yes. Good morning, Chairley and council members. I just want to say very briefly, big mahalo and aloha to Gladys. I've only been here six years, living here six years, but I have interacted with her in both official and unofficial capacities. And she's one of the leaders of this county that we will sorely miss in office and in her employment. She's been both elected official and a department director. And I've interacted with her on the Kula Community Association Board. She was instrumental in helping me succeed in my first year as Chair of the Council of Government Commission, where she was the liaison from the mayor's office. And on behalf of Maui Tomorrow Foundation, on behalf of the Kula Community Association, and on behalf of the Council of Government Commission, Gladys, we will miss you and we hope other people can emulate your service to this county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Clerk?
The next person signed up to testify on ceremonial resolutions is Lucien Denne, to be followed by Lico Wallace.
Lucien? Morning. A lot of times we hear her voice, don't necessarily see her when she testifies. Lucien, are you there? Yes Kelly?
She put a message in the chat box saying, "Unmute me please." So I don't know if she's muted by our...
Mr. Clerk, can you unmute her?
Madam Chair, we do see Lucien Denne in the meeting. We have unmuted her on our end, but she remains muted on her end. We cannot unmute her. She has to unmute herself.
And then Mr. Clerk, is that... Yesterday, we heard from somebody who was calling in, and someone said that in order to unmute yourself when you're calling in, you have to push like star four or something like that?
Yes, that's correct. There is a way for callers to also unmute themselves. I'm not too sure what the combination is. Miss Denne does appear to be connected with... by a computer.
Oh, she is?
I believe so. I see that she has...
Why don't we come back to her?
Then the next person signed up to testify is... Miss Denne, I see that you're unmuted now. Are you there? Okay. Then the next person signed up to testify is Lico Wallace.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good morning.
Good morning. I would just like to give my condolence on behalf of the Wallace family on Molokai to the late Scotty Schaefer and to his ohana. He has been so instrumental to our community via the paramedic that he was. This big burly guy who had a heart of gold that was there at every situation. Helping people... Oh scary. Deal with the situations that were... I don't know where that noise is coming from. But he was... gave up his heart, and he was always there for each and everyone who needed to be uplifted in a situation that had conspired. He was always there on the scene. And he brought this whole new life to the... We used to have an ambulance before that was like a hearse that came to all the scenes. And when Scotty started the paramedics here on Molokai, it just... their aura and their presence, they were very akamai in what they did. And he just had a heart of gold. And he was surely... he will surely be missed. And we just wanted to give our love to the family, just short and sweet, that they will just lean on the Lord the whole time. Anyway, thank you for hearing my testimony.
Chair, you're muted.
Thank you, Lico. Mr. Clerk, did we find Lucien yet?
I believe we were hearing her microphone earlier. Let me see. Miss Denne, I've unmuted you on our end. Can you...
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, we can.
Okay. Sorry, I must have had it on the wrong setting. I just want to say that Gladys Baisa well deserves this retirement, but what a wonderful contribution she has made to our community. I have worked with her for so many years on so many different small projects and longer-range thoughts. She sat with us hour by hour through three years of the Maui Island Plan process. She was probably one of the few people who was not on the GPAC. We used to call her the 26th member of the GPAC because she was going to be the committee chair of the committee that heard the general plan update. And she assigned herself the responsibility of showing up and hearing what the citizens' body had to say, what their process was. And I think it was very appreciative by all who were concerned. And you know, Gladys has had so many hats she's worn. She started out helping others as a nurse. She did great work at MEO, really setting the foundation for that organization. And then her time on the county council, including... We were all thrilled that we had a woman as council chair. Now, of course, this has just become standard procedure. But then it was a pretty big deal. And she just lent a very... great sense of practicality to discussions about a lot of matters. Though I know she has great plans for things that she and Sherman can do when they're retired and just hang out and go to Mexico and visit with friends. But thank you Gladys from all of us out here for all that you've done.
And thank you, Lucien. Mr. Clerk, do we have any more testifiers?
Yes Madam Chair, we have one more testifier for ceremonial resolutions. That is Albert Perez.
Morning Albert.
Hello.
Aloha.
I just... I wanted to quickly say that Maui County has been very lucky to have a dedicated public servant in Gladys Baisa. I was always pleased to go in when she was in the council because she would always refer to me as that nice young man. And that doesn't happen a lot anymore. But Gladys is one of those people who is very open to discussing things. You might not always agree with her, but she was always going to listen to you and give it some careful thought. And so I just want to wish her and Sherman good luck and enjoy your retirement. Although it's kind of hard to believe that we won't be seeing more of Gladys. But I think we will. Anyway, take care Gladys and mahalo for all your service to Maui County. Aloha.
Thank you Albert. Next.
Madam Chair, there is another testifier. That would be Faith Chase.
Faith?
Good morning, Council. I just wanted to say thank you so much to Gladys for the years of keeping decorum. I think that for me, I'll never look at Pink Palaka the same. I'll always think of her. And I know it's been a tumultuous journey following the water issue. And I just think that she's done so great navigating and staying out of the fray, so to speak, of this very, very serious issue. And quite frankly, I will be probably still calling her for a couple of thoughts and comments. But I appreciate you Gladys. And just as Lucien said, I echo how exciting it was to see a Wahine chair. So thank you for starting the trend. Aloha.
Thank you Faith. Mr. Clerk?
Madam Chair, there are no other individuals signed up to testify on ceremonial and condolent resolutions. Shall we close testimony on ceremonial and condolent resolutions and proceed with those resolutions?
Are there any objections to closing testimony on the resolutions, on the ceremonial resolutions?
No objections.
No objections, so ordered. Mr. Clerk?
You have before you a proposed resolution entitled, "Congratulating Former Council Chair Gladys Koella Baisa on Her Retirement."
Vice Chair Rollins Fernandez?
Mahalo Chair. I move to adopt the proposed resolution entitled, "Congratulating Former Council Chair Gladys Koella Baisa on Her Retirement."
Back here. It's been moved by Vice Chair Rollins Fernandez, seconded by Councilmember Kelly King to adopt the resolution for Gladys Baisa. Miss Rollins Fernandez?
Mahalo Chair. May I please request the clerk read the resolution in its entirety?
Mr. Clerk?
"Congratulating Former Council Chair Gladys Koella Baisa on Her Retirement. Whereas, former Council Chair Gladys Koella Baisa retired on June 30, 2020, after more than 50 years of service to the Maui County community. And whereas, born in Paia to Thomas and Virginia Koelo, Ms. Baisa has one sibling and is a third-generation resident of the island. And whereas, Ms. Baisa was the class valedictorian for the Maui High School class of 1958, and then went on to earn a licensed practical nurse certificate from St. Francis School on Oahu and an accounting certificate from Maui Technical School. And whereas, she began a distinguished career at Maui Economic Opportunity, Inc. in 1969, then steadily advanced in the organization through her strong work ethic, management acumen, and demonstrated she had compassion, eventually serving as MEO's executive director from 1984 to 2005, helping to establish and oversee some of the county of Maui's most cherished and most needed family and community services. And whereas, Ms. Baisa was first elected to the council in 2006 and led the passage of the Bed and Breakfast Home Ordinance, oversaw approval of development entitlements for the new Kihei Police Station, and shepherded adoption of the first Maui Island Plan. And whereas, she served as Chair of the Maui County Council during the 2013-2015 council term, a tenure in which she was credited with uniting the county's mayors, council chairs, and other council members in a combined effort to raise awareness among State of Hawaii officials on the need to take into account the needs of county residents. And whereas, as council chair, she also initiated several projects to promote civic engagement, including the launch of the council's Facebook and Twitter pages and the council's regular column in the Maui News. And whereas, in a Maui Time cover story on August 24, 2016, Ms. Baisa discussed the joy of serving on the council and reflected on the opportunities to learn and serve she enjoyed in her decade as a council member. Whereas, after leaving elective office on January 2, 2017, and having served on the council from the Pukalani-Kula-Ulupalakua residency area for five consecutive terms, Ms. Baisa served as the Director of Water Supply and Executive Assistant to the Mayor. And whereas, she has been a member of dozens of boards and organizations and currently is an active member of Kula AARP, Kula Community Association, Pukalani Community Association, Makawau Community Association, American Association of Retired Persons, Maui Filipino Chamber of Commerce, Rotary District 5000, and Lahaina Honolua Senior Club. And whereas, Ms. Baisa has also been the recipient of numerous awards, including Outstanding Alumni Award, Maui High School, Person of the Year, Maui Weekly, Lifetime Achievement Award, Association of Farm Worker Organizations, 100 Outstanding Centennial Mauians, Maui County Centennial Committee, Grand Marshall, Maui Fair Parade, and Maui United Way Golden Appreciation Awards. And whereas, as a retiree, Ms. Baisa is eager to spend time with Sherman, her husband of 55 years, her sister, children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren, and many dear friends, including cherished friends in the nation of Mexico. And whereas, former Council Chair Baisa's dedication to public service and tireless efforts to support Maui County residents have helped to improve the lives of our community now and for generations to come. Now, therefore...
Chair?
Chair, you're muted.
Oh, I'm sorry. Vice Chair Rollins Fernandez?
Mahalo Chair. I move to amend the resolution by including nine more whereas clauses, one from each member of the council as we read them into the record, as was your fabulous idea.
Do we have a second?
Second. Back in motion.
Second. Okay. It's been moved by... excuse me. Vice Chair Rollins Fernandez and seconded by Councilmember Kelly King to adopt the amendments to the resolution. And Vice Chair Rollins Fernandez, do you have any comments?
Mahalo Chair. Whereas, Gladys Baisa has a serious sweet tooth. She loves most sweets and truly believes you should eat dessert first, just in case of an earthquake.
And whereas, a little-known fact about Gladys Baisa was discovered a few years ago. Cinderella was famous for her sparkling shoe. Gladys is known for her pretty feet. She takes exceptional care of them. Legend has it that they are soft as a baby's behind.
And whereas, Gladys Baisa received her first major recognition when she was crowned Ms. Maui High in 1961. Who can forget her red sequin gown, white gloves, and hibiscus in her hair? At 16, she was destined for fame. Sorry, I was reading what you guys were saying. I hope Gladys is smiling because I cannot see her face.
She is.
And whereas, named as one of Maui's magazines, quote, "Most Intriguing People," unquote, in 2006, Gladys said her key six to success was, I quote, and I say believe this is what she really said, "I can learn anything and I'll work my ass off for you," unquote.
Thank you, Ms. King.
And whereas, a Leo, Gladys was born on August 13, 1940, attended Maui High School, class of 1958, married the love of her life, Sherman Baisa, in 1965, and is a mother of three, two sons and one daughter, grandmother of seven and great-grandmother of 12. And with her myriad accomplishments and contributions is an example to and inspiration to all young women that you can have it all.
Very good. Mr. Senancy?
And whereas, Auntie Gladys Baisa and Uncle Sherman Baisa be ordained honorary members of the East Maui community for their dedication and public service for the establishment of economic opportunity efforts in remote communities and throughout Maui Newey.
And whereas, Gladys Baisa always said that in her retirement, she would write a book. My mother said. She would often quote words of wisdom from her mother, Virginia Koelo, such as, "No ask, no get, or paying rent at the end of your life, you will have only receipts. But if you buy and struggle, you will have an asset."
Thank you. Ms. Paulson?
And whereas, Gladys Baisa has served as a beacon of light to leaders, young and old, of Maui County, empowering others to have faith in themselves and what they can accomplish in their communities, and...
Ms. Kama?
Whereas, Gladys was immortalized in 2018 when she was enshrined in Akaku's Walk of Heroes, at which time she said, "I'm honored to be a hero at Akaku. I've always liked to bring people together to focus on a goal. I'm Miss Fix-It. If there's a community problem, I'll find a way to get involved because that's what aloha is all about. If you want to do it well, you must commit your life to the job. My advice to the youth of today is to focus on appreciation. Be kind and do what's right, and..."
Mr. Clerk, if there are no further comments or discussions, Mr. Clerk, can you continue reading the rest of the resolution?
"Be it resolved by the council of the county of Maui: One, that it congratulates former Council Chair Gladys Koella Baisa on her retirement; and two, that certified copies of this resolution be transmitted to Gladys Koella Baisa, her husband, Sherman F. Baisa, her sons, Alfred and Sherman Anthony, her daughter, Gladys, her sister, Virginia Koelo Shinne, the Honorable Michael P. Victorino, Mayor, County of Maui, and the Honorable David Y. Igue, Governor, State of Hawaii."
All right. Seeing no further discussion, any hands? Seeing no further discussion, any hands? All those in favor of the motion to amend, the main motion, say aye.
Aye.
And raise your hand. Oh, it's unanimous. Okay. Then, now, the motion as amended, the main motion as amended, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Another nine-zero unanimous vote. Congratulations, Gladys. Hope you're doing okay, having fun, started your retirement. Please say a few words to the members and to the public. Gladys.
Thank you very much, Chair. It's my honor today, and I really am touched by, by this resolution today. I didn't expect it, and I appreciate all the kind words. I just want you to know that it was my pleasure and it was my honor to serve our community. And even though I have retired, I'm going to continue to be involved. Now I can be involved freely.
Chair, may we?
Yes.
Ms. Baisa, turn her camera so we can see her beautiful face.
Gladys. What a bucket you have there.
Does that look better? I just, again, want to say thank you very, very much.
All right, Mr. Clerk. Watch carefully. Got a screen share right now. Gladys, you see that picture of you?
I do. It's beautiful. Thank you.
That's our virtual lay to you, and it comes with a lot of aloha and gratitude and best wishes on your retirement. Thank you so very much for all you've done. Thank you.
Chair Lee, there's one thing I want to say before we end this. I know you're in a hurry. I want to correct the record. I was not the first council chair. You were. And when I thought about it, you were very helpful, and now you're doing it again. God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Gladys. Take care.
Thank you. Aloha.
Aloha. Mr. Clerk.
Madam Chair, for the record, that is Resolution 20-92.